And I have asked that those continue to be given to the board so that for transparency, so everybody knows what we've been discussing. These aren't set in stone, we have not approved them. And our job through the ad hoc committee is strictly to do the negotiations, have the discussions, and bring a recommendation to the board. And the board makes a decision on, you know, what we're approving or what we're not. And just like the last time, we discussed it and the board said, "We think you should go back and have a discussion about, um, you know, the salary being topped heavy, you know, in the first year or whatever." And then also discussing the sick leave and vacation, that kind of stuff. So that's what we did at the last meeting. And, um, in that, in that discussion Noel had, you know, in that discussion Noel had said that he would, he prefers to stick with the salary as is, um, but willing to take out, he's willing to take out the 90-day opt-out, which was also some discussion around the table as well, because people weren't feeling comfortable with just, you know, having a 90-day opt-out in that contract and being able to just up and leave in 30 days or 90 days or whatever it was, 90 days. So we discussed that and, um, we've also had meetings with Jeff as well about the construction liaison and the buildings, grounds, and maintenance director and, and he's not interested in doing, well, kind of changed, but at the time of our ad hoc meeting, Jeff was not interested in doing the buildings and grounds and the construction liaison position, correct? At the beginning of that meeting. But then, um, as the meeting progressed, he discussed being comfortable with temporarily doing the buildings, grounds, and maintenance and the construction liaison position. So another thing that was discussed was, um, Jeff had handed out and I'm guessing that you didn't, did you send that to the board members?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There was a list of other duties or other things that will need to be done going forward with different programs and, and things that Jeff brought to the board as potential things he could do to help the district, move the district along and, and the many things that will need to be done. I asked Margaret to be here because there was some, we had some discussion about, you know, recently the board had gotten information that Jeff doesn't, you know, that he doesn't have rights to the principal position, um, so she's here to talk about that if we need to talk about that. We also asked her to attend to, um, answer any questions about, there were some questions that came in an email about can you, in the superintendent's contract, can you, um, can you be making more than the governor? She's here to answer that question as well and any other others we have. Matt, what other, what other things that, and Bill, what other things were we gonna have her?
Oh, I gave the list to, I gave the list to Margaret in regards to, um, well, it was just actually the, the meeting, it was part of the meeting, how we, what we can, what we can do with this meeting as far as, you know, who we can have in here and distancing and whatever, like that.
So Margaret?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so Bill had asked me to contact you because he was...
That's correct.
One time he was, he wasn't reachable, he didn't have service, and another time, um, he wasn't tech savvy and just wanted me to forward you some emails and things. Do you remember some of the questions or discussions we had, um, that maybe you can talk to the board about now? Do you remember some of those questions?
Sure. I mean, I think there were two primary issues. The one issue was with respect to whether Superintendent Carey had any rights to bounce back into a principal position.
Correct.
And I think with, with respect to that, I drafted a memorandum and I sent it, I sent it to all of the board members, uh, with respect to the answer to that question.
Okay.
And then the second question was, there was a provision in Jeff Carey's superintendent contract that indicated that the board would take action to determine whether to offer him a superintendent contract 12 months prior to the expiration of the contract.
Correct.
And there was some question or confusion about whether, whether action was taken by June 30th, 2019 and whether or not action, if it had been taken by June 30th, 2019, if somehow that extended the contract beyond the term of June 30th, 2020. And Superintendent Carey and I had a conversation via email about that question. My legal opinion is that that provision, you know, whether or not the school board took action, that provision does not extend the contract beyond June 30th, 2020 nor couldn't by law. And so the contract ends June 30th, 2020.
Okay.
And that's what I understand too, that I always thought that clause in there was not enforceable because it's an extension of a contract and you cannot extend a contract. So thank you for clarifying that, Margaret.
And then we also discussed about the, um, 30-day written notice that we have to give a 30-day written notice before we can take action, um, especially taking action to offer a contract to somebody else or approve a contract to somebody else for the superintendent position.
Right, that's correct. And that's why I drafted the proposed resolution, because there is a requirement in the superintendent's contract that you give them notice no later than 30 days prior to the time that you're going to, um, determine that you're not going to offer him the position. So my understanding was that the superintendent's contract, and when I say superintendent, I mean Superintendent Schmidt's contract, was going to be before the board. And what I said was, according to Superintendent Jeff Carey's contract, before you do that, you need to give him written notice of intent that you're not going to renew his contract and that, and then he has to be given 30 days. And so that was the purpose of this resolution, um, because that needs to happen before you, 30, at least 30 days prior to, before you approve a new superintendent's contract.
And Margaret, this is mad. I have a question regarding that, um, when, when we spoke, it was my understanding that the, the 30 days and then there was a period that Jeff could ask us to reconsider and then there was a period that we would have to respond to that. Is, is that 30 plus 10 plus 7 or is the 10 and the, are those other things within the 30 days?
The other things are within the 30 days.
So it's 30 days total. It's 10 days, 10 days for, uh, for a, um, request for a meeting with the board, another seven days for the board to decide, you know, to take action on, on having that meeting. And then it would be the remaining 13 days, right?
Yeah.
Remaining 13 days of basically awaiting an out period, um, if we're going to offer a contract to another superintendent. After that, 13 more days, we'd be able to take action.
That's correct.
Okay. So that was part of the reason why we asked her to be here today is so that everybody could get that information and, and know what the, um, resolution is for. As we have discussed numerous times here, um, going forward, we've talked about, um, I believe it's in the, the plan also that went to MDE that we were going to only have one superintendent going forward if there is a consolidation, correct? So in the plan...
So I believe consolidation or not, we have one superintendent going forward.
But I don't, is it regardless going forward? So it's just if we consolidate? If we consolidate...
No, you can, you can still choose either way.
I know, but I guess what I'm asking is the, the plan that went to MDE for our consolidation and, you know, what we're doing.
Assuming you're consolidating.
Yeah, it's a plan, I guess.
Well, originally when our committee, I still don't like that term, but I've gotten over it. Originally when our, our committee convened, I think the idea was to, um, to move forward only in case of consolidation. That was the first draft of the super, proposed superintendent's contract that was circulated. Said if there was no consolidation, that contract was null and void. Um, I think by our second meeting or so, we had kind of discussed that, doesn't it make sense to either, I mean, obviously you need one superintendent if you're consolidated, but it, we decided it made sense to try and get a joint superintendent if not a consolidated, if we were not consolidated.
And when you say we...
So we kind of...
When you say we, it doesn't mean we or the ad hoc committee...
It means that the ad hoc committee decided to make the recommendation to, I mean, like, like Brandy said, we, we on the ad hoc committee understand, I mean, we were charged with bringing a recommendation to the board to vote on.
But...
And when we talked about this at our study session a few weeks ago, I didn't hear anyone say that wasn't a good idea.
Well, I, I would go a step further. I think that's the direction the board told us to go in.
Yes.
So it wasn't that we were, you know, we weren't saying anything and looking for an objection. The board told us what they wanted us to go forward with in negotiations. And it's been the consensus of the board, I know Polly doesn't like that word, but it's been, you know, it's been...
Consensus actually does mean everybody agrees, okay? Without voting.
Discussion of the majority.
Okay.
Would that be...
That's fine, yeah. The only thing is that there was never a vote on this and now we've got contracts in front of us...
Correct.
...that put one, one avenue in and not the other and it was never decided yet by the board, even though there was discussion about it.
There's discussion about it.
And not everybody got their input because I was not able to be at that meeting. Tom, were you, you were at the board meeting but not the study, but not the study session?
No, I didn't make the study session.
And so, um, I have some other thoughts on it. And I reviewed the board meeting, the study session, I, I remember Kelly had some issues about, um, salary and there were some other questions in there, so...
The things that the board told us to, to go back, like I said earlier, the things that the board directed us to go back for discussion on was the salary. The board didn't like, um, they didn't prefer that the money be offered in the, the front half, half, front end loading it. So they wanted to, to equal out that, the money. And also, um, to have a discussion on the sick and vacation as well.
And I, I agree on how the last contract was proposed, particularly given the 90-day unilateral out that was in there, you know, for, I mean, assuming we agreed to the contract, that would have been there for Dr. Schmidt. And we brought that concern back to, to them. And, um, you can see, I don't know, Brandy passed out a high-level, uh, posted note that I kind of brought him, I know I saw it here. Um, and said, you know, with that 90-day out, that we were...
This one.
Our board had indicated a little bit of angst with that. You know, particularly the, the increase in year one, given the fact that there was a 90-day out. And as a result of that, Dr. Schmidt agreed to have that taken out of the contract. So he would be obligated and committed, um, to either the consolidated district and/or as a joint superintendent.
Shared.
Shared joint, um, for the duration.
Well, I'm glad that part was removed because I disagreed with that too. But the other part I think should be removed is his $10,000 adjusted for inflation every year as a retention fee. Now, if he's committed, why is it a retention fee where he could, if he doesn't stay, he gets, if he does stay, he gets 10. If he stays, he gets 10. If he stays, he gets 10. To me, that doesn't sound like commitment. I think it's, um, it shouldn't be there.
I mean, that and my, my response to that, I mean, it's, it's just part of, and I completely agree with adjusting for inflation. It's, you know, 10,000 and 10,200. And I, I don't think any, I mean, if it's 2% inflation, although the shape that the world did nowadays, that could be a big issue.
You agree with the inflationary clause?
I, I don't like the inflationary clause.
Okay, good.
As far as the 10,000, whether you put it as a, it's actually, I mean, is, it's better if you finish the year before you get it as opposed to putting it in the salary and splitting it through the year.
But Margaret, can I ask you a question? In a contract, we've got a three-year contract, they took out the 90-day out clause, and so there's, there isn't a retention, uh, there isn't a way to, to opt out after year one or year two, is there? When you've got, when we're going to, if, if this is a three-year contract, both parties are agreeing to three years, why is there a retention in there?
Both parties could mutually agree to terminate the contract, and I think that happens quite often with superintendent contracts.
And that was in there, and I think that was in Jeff's, I think that's in here too. And so we don't really, so then we can both agree not to. You don't have to have it tied to money. And, and in a way that would be like to say, it could be said, "Well, I don't like the way things are going," or "I don't like how you're treating me, so, um, I'm gonna take off and I get $10,000 if I stay, if I don't, you know, if I stay." I, I think that's wrong, just out and out wrong, retention fee or retention bonus or whatever it is. And I would like to see that gone.
Go ahead, Margaret, could you answer that?
Oh, so to, so to answer, um, your question, unfortunately I can't see who's making the question, but I'll just, I'll just answer it to the director who asked. It technically would be a breach of contract, but the reality is that school districts, if the superintendent says at the end of a school year, "I'm going to leave," uh, school districts never enforce that contract for a couple of reasons. One of the reasons is that they're going to have to get a new superintendent. And so, you know, in order to enforce that contract, they would have to sue the superintendent for breach of contract. And in trying to get a new superintendent, if you're suing your old superintendent, it's gonna make it very difficult. Um, and secondly, like you say, usually if the relationship has broken down so much that the superintendent wants to leave, usually the school board also wants them to leave. And so, uh, there is that mutual agreement. So technically, could you enforce that? You could, but the reality is, nobody does.
I agree with you, Margaret. We had a principal situation like that some years back. Broke the contract and we said just the same thing, "What are you gonna do? Can't make her stay, you know, and just go on." But isn't the reten, the retention money redundant in this contract?
Could you repeat that question?
Isn't the retention, the retention, um, it's not a fee, retention...
Money.
Bonus money, isn't that either redundant or incongruent with a three-year contract the way it's written?
I mean, it's not that uncommon. So it's a way to, you know, sometimes superintendents leave because they've found a better job somewhere else. And even though they've got a contract with one district, they take a contract with another school district. And so, I mean, it is a way where you're not paying it in their salary, you're giving it to them at the end, you know, upon completion of it. So, I mean, it's not in every, it's not in every superintendent contract certainly, but it's not that uncommon.
And I, I think there's so many different ways that you see in this comparison that compensation, so many different forms of compensation, whether it's health insurance, um, contributions to 403B or for whatever they, they are, to, to retirement plans, um, vehicle allowances, cell phone stipends, I mean, it's just another form of compensation.
And could you, could you speak a little bit to that as well? Because there was some question about, um, a current contract, I believe Noel's current contract, there was a question about whether or not it's legal to, um, have health insurance or to give money to people who choose not to have health insurance. Basically, you give them additional money because they're not taking that health insurance? Is that de-legal?
No, no. I mean, like so many contracts or settlement agreements, you know, many of the provisions are negotiable. And, um, as I heard someone else indicating, uh, you know, there's lots of different forms of compensation. And if the superintendent says, you know, "I'm willing not to take health insurance," that's gonna save you $15,000, "I'd like you to put that $15,000 in my 403B or on my salary," there's nothing wrong with doing that.
I know it's a different, um, different scenario, Margaret, this is Polly again, but as I understand, a teacher cannot do that because they're part of a bargaining agreement, right? Or ask me?
Uh, they, they can't do it unless there is a provision in the collective bargaining agreement that allows it. And usually, the way that the health insurance works for teachers is that everyone is required to be in it and that usually that's the way you get the best rates. So because of that, um, usually the collective bargaining agreement requires everyone to be in the health insurance. If you go back, say, 15 years or so, it used to be not that uncommon that there was money given to people if they opted out. And the amount of money that they would give to people was less than what was going to cost the employer if they took the health insurance. But over time, that changed because what, what sometimes happened was you would lose a lot of the, the people that had, um, good ratings in their health insurance. And then if you got, if the remaining people in the pool were the sicker people, then everyone's health insurance skyrocketed. So they, they took out, in a lot, in a lot of places, they took out the ability not to be in that health insurance pool to try and make those pools better. If that makes sense.
Well, as I understand, our, our contracts with our teachers, we do not require them to take the insurance. Some do and some don't. And I was told by, well, I was told it was not legal for a teacher who didn't, who opted not to take that insurance to get, um, a higher salary no matter what it was in lieu of that.
I think you're digressing though. You know, we're specifically supposed to be discussing the superintendent contract and the construction liaison, so if we could make sure to just keep the questions up there.
But I just wanted to make the point that not everybody can do that, gets that, and I just wondered if it's only in collective bargaining agreements and if you're on a one-to-one, um, individual contract, or you're saying it's legal then, but it's not if you're a collective bargaining unit?
I, I think this, we have done that in the past with...
I'd like to hear her answer.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Oh, oh.
So was the que, so was the question whether you can do it for the superintendent contract or you can do it in collective bargaining?
Yes, is it legal, um, both ways, both ways, to give more money in lieu of benefits? In a collective bargaining agreement or is it only in a collective bargaining agreement you can't, but in an individual contract such as this or administrative one you can?
I mean, in part it's gonna depend upon the, the requirements of your health insurance and the language of your collective bargaining agreement. But I have seen collective bargaining agreements where they have, uh, provided money in lieu of health insurance. But I'm not a benefits attorney, so I mean, if that has changed over the last, you know, 15 years, I, I don't know.
There's nothing...
But for contracts for the superintendent, I can tell you absolutely you can do that.
And there's nothing in this contract that says he's being paid more because he's not taking health insurance. And, and I believe we have contracts within this district where that's the case, where we've offered, not since I've been here, but in the past, where we've offered more money to people not in a collective bargaining unit, but outside of a collective bargaining unit for saying, "Okay, part of the deal is, I don't want health insurance, so I'd like you to increase the salary."
Well, in the, in the reason, the reason why we're having this discussion is because it, it was brought up. I, I saw Polly in the office here and she hadn't asked that question, so I just wanted to follow up on the question she had asked me. So legal counsel gave that answer. Um, then the other thing too, I don't think, I, I might have brought it up, but I don't know if we got an answer or discussed it. But there was a question about the, um, salary cap and, um, the governor, um, superintendent not being able to make more than the governor. That was a question that had been asked actually from a citizen that I was hoping you could talk about and address here as well.
It's 110% more than the governor can. And if you do, you have to get away from...
Sure, so there is a statute that talks about, uh, that certain public officials cannot be paid more than a hard, and 10% of the governor's salary. But that statute changed to exclude school districts. So school districts are not included under that statutory requirement.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, and then if you guys will take a look at, um, in this packet of three papers with the, the front sheet is the ad hoc committee meeting minutes. The next one was the little post-it note from, from Matt as a possible, um, option for a superintendent contract salary stuff. And then the next page is something that was given to us by Noel during the ad hoc committee meeting, um, showing that a lot of times these don't show all the financial information. And so, he gave us the sheet that you're looking at here. Um, and just the example of like the Cook County, Cook County pays the $58,745 to the superintendent of the... Cook County pays the fifty-eight thousand, seven forty-five to the superintendent of the Lake Superior District. That's the one I'm talking about. So that shared superintendent makes two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. The Cook County and the Lake Superior District Superintendent that's shared. The Nashua, Kwanton, Deer River Superintendent that is shared makes two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. And then there's, there's more information. But, but specifically, you know, looking at the Cook County, Lake Superior District and Nashua, Kwanton, Deer River District, just because we've talked about he's the highest paid or would be potentially the highest paid in the dis, you know, in the area. And we're just providing information.
So on these, on these annual salaries of this printout we got here, is that the annual salary? Is that total wages and benefits or is that just annual salary?
It's just the, it's just the salary.
So what's the total wages and benefits of each of one of these superintendents?
You'd have to go through and add on, you know, if there's, if it says how much their insurance contribution is, so on and so forth, you'd have to add those onto the salary.
So that's not in here, right? So, but that's what I would be looking at, total wages and benefits versus just their annual salary, starting annual salary. That's what I'd be looking at. So this, this, this here is not, is not a true statement of what they make?
Correct. And that was the point.
Where did this come from?
That was the point of this. So, um, this, I believe, was from, I think, I believe this one was from ARC.
Okay.
I believe. And this one just, you know, this is something that they compiled.
Um, if I, from the sheet here, we have another combination superintendent. We have Reggie Eckerbretson, and she's with St. Louis County and with, uh, Mountain Iron Buell. And if these figures are right, she doesn't make nearly as a superintendent of two districts. Um, a hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred, if I add those two up. So, Larry.
Where's the, where's, where would she be?
But that, that's salar-, that would be salary.
And salary, annual salary.
And that wouldn't include all of the insurance and things.
Well, right here. You just included this whole salary, only this one.
Which one are you talking about?
The one you just gave us.
This one?
Yeah.
The one with the two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand?
You just said that was salary.
Five seventeen, that's for Cook County and Lake Superior District.
You said that was salary only.
That is with their, that's with, it says right there.
Right.
It says, it's excluding, um, long-term disability, life insurance.
So that's salary.
FICA and TRA. But that would include, I believe that includes like health insurance.
Excluding, well. All I'm saying is you've got, you've got another example to compare. And it's not going to be nearly, uh, these figures. And it's right here in our own backyard. If you wanna compare another superintendent that's actually doing two districts. And that could be figured out. I can't do it right here if you wanna add insurance and everything in there, but.
So it'd be?
Just the salary only there.
Hundred, yeah, a hundred seventy-two thousand dollars.
Eight hundred, a hundred seventy-three thousand, yeah.
Okay. And she's getting four thousand contributed to, that's add-on. She's getting another, I mean, I'm sure she.
Well, we have to add on the same things or not add them on? So I'm saying, you know, there's some more math to be done here. Giving you the information. And back to, and if we're talking about total salary, back to the ten thousand dollar retention bonus, you add that on to the first year, and now you're not a hundred, a hundred ninety-eight, two hundred dollars, you're two oh eight. That's getting, that's.
You definitely need to add that on, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm just saying. So that kicks him over two-hundred-ten thousand dollars for the first year only.
Over two hundred, two oh eight is under two-ten.
You know, what's the two-ten they put?
He just said over two-ten.
I, I didn't read that. I didn't read that. Over two hundred, don't put it down, over, over two, two oh eight.
I agree, I mean, it, it's, it's a lot.
A lot of money.
It is definitely a lot of money. But I think when you look at, um, where he's at, what? If consolidation goes through with everything that's going on now, I, I don't know how we're gonna have an election, to be honest with you, in, in, um, eight weeks. Um, it's certainly gonna be challenging. It, it's a lot easier. It's a lot more challenging for someone to come in if we, consolidation actually doesn't happen. But I still think it's the right thing to do because you're gonna have two completely independent districts that you're gonna be in charge of. And, um, not to mention a, a little construction project that is hopefully going to move forward here. And the only reason I say hopefully is, you know, God only knows where our, our world is go, gonna be and when we think we're supposed to start construction. And then there's just, it, 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 it's an awful lot. At the same time, I, I think in working something out with, with Jeff to help would help a lot, but there's still, at the end of the day, a lot of this is going to fall on the superintendent with the construction project. There's no way of getting around that.
When St. Louis County Schools had their big construction project, they built a new school up north, a new school down there, they remodeled three other schools. There was one superintendent in, in a big, large school district like that. So yes, it's going to be a big job. But is it, does it, um, does it justify that much more? And take again, Reggie Eckerbretson from, she's, she's doing two separate school districts in our Mountain Iron Buell and Missage, um, and, um, St., um, St. Louis County Schools. One superintendent in two districts. It's, it's not unheard of. And there are a lot of districts in, in the state, well, they don't consult it, but they have joint powers, um, agreements and boards, and they run buildings together. So, I just, that's my two cents. It's way exorbitant, I think. Especially, here, I'll, I'll say this too. Especially when at one of those meetings, Noel Schmidt, when people were coming and asking about the, the, um, contracts and things, he said, be sure, there will be no new money when we, when we merge these contracts, no new money. But boy, there's sure a lot of money here. I think with the first year is over twelve percent. I don't even think I figured in that extra ten thousand. Twelve percent from what he's making now and, and to this first year's salary. And if we don't, if we don't consolidate, how much of that will Ewle Gilbert pay? And how much will Virginia pay? Of all, the whole package and all the benefits and things? Is it gonna be proportionate?
That's a very good point. We, we do need to work that out, both for the superintendent and we also need with, assuming we're able to come to terms with a, whatever Jeff's position would, would look like. Some of that is, is included in the construction budget. Some of that would not be included in the construction budget. And how would that be allocated? And that is something we, we need to have ironed out before we approve these contracts.
I thought that bonding money was not for salaries and hiring people, it was only for buildings.
There's money in.
My understanding, there is money, there is my understanding that there is money that, um, 'cause I talked to John Hewnick about the construction liaison position. And my understanding is there has been money set aside for a construction liaison person. Um, there has been about two-hundred thousand dollars set aside for a construction liaison person. And that, that calculation, um, was based on a part-time position, um, over the course, so that money would be a salary or whatever, over the course of construction. So it could be three years, it could be four years. But that, that two-hundred thousand dollars was budgeted for a construction liaison.
No different than architectural fees, construction management fees, bond issuance costs, et cetera, all others. All, there's all kinds of soft costs in there.
No, no, but I just thought, I'm sure I heard at some meeting that said, you don't, you don't hire people out of that money.
That's not true.
Well, I don't know, where did I hear it? Do you remember where I heard it, one of those meetings?
We've had a lot of meetings.
Or that even the two that we already hired, one, one Michelle came out of, what, the joint powers?
That's Virginia.
Virginia.
And that's, and, okay, and the curriculum coordinator, they're both being paid before by Virginia. And that's where I thought, the reason was that it couldn't come out, but anyway.
Well, how many years has Noel spent superintendent?
May I speak for a second?
Three.
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
Go ahead, Kelly.
So, I did do some thinking and looking at some of the stuff after our last meeting. And if you do look and take into account the health stuff, um, removing that from the contract and Noel's and Jeff's are pretty darn right on with one another if you look at, um, how each of them chose to negotiate their contracts. So I don't see a big split like that. And I guess I am, uh, more understanding if the choice is to increase your, um, your salary over the healthcare benefits. Um, I would like that to be a little bit clearer maybe in the contract. Um, I don't necessarily know if it needs to be though, but, uh, just for my little preference, um, I think some people don't understand the fact that there are no healthcare benefits being taken there or there is an increase of wage. You can't necessarily, you're not comparing apples to apples when you look at the two contracts. So I do, that sits better with me. Um, I, as I've said before, I'm in huge support of the, I get that there was a comment that other schools have built new schools and have these projects, but this is much more than just a new school. And the new school itself is, is a huge undertaking. We're not talking about one school, we're talking about three schools. Aside from that though, that we have to keep in mind too, is it's not just the, we're, we're changing the educational structure. So our superintendent needs to be able to hold on that. And with this new superintendent position of whether it's pulling into a consolidated district or two districts, there is increased workload and capacity that's required. So, um, everything's sitting a little bit better with me than our last meeting on support.
On that note, Kelly, on that note, Kelly, do you think there aren't any other superintendents that could do this? Or that would like to or want to, especially at this salary level? And we haven't, we don't even know, all across the state, maybe in our own backyards?
I don't think that would be in, I, I'll let, do you wanna answer that, Kelly? And then I'll answer it too. She asked you the question.
Can, can someone repeat it? I'm gonna, I asked Jeff to move the speaker for our six o'clock meeting, just so I made sure I could hear, but I didn't hear all of it.
I just asked if you, if, the statement that you made, um, don't you think that there's any other superintendent in the, anywhere that could not handle this job or would not want to or would not like to or wouldn't be interested in a, a thing like this? Especially at this salary or even at less, for less money? And do just as good of a job or maybe even have experience in this area already?
Did you hear that, Kelly?
No, I, it's.
So basically, she's paraphrasing. Don't you think we should, at that salary, we should, should have at least gone looking for someone different that would have been able to do the job?
Perhaps.
Perhaps.
Okay, so with that, I was affirm, I, I mean, right from the get-go, I don't necessarily think we should be looking for a different superintendent when we have two capable superintendents right now. Um, so I was, from, from the get-go, I was not in support of posting and looking elsewhere when we have two superintendents that are doing a good job, I believe, with where we are at right now. Um, that's where I wanted it, left between the two superintendents. If we have a capability of one wanting it, whatnot. If both of them are wanting it, then I would have been in support of interviewing both of them and going through that process. But I'm not in support of looking elsewhere when two people have been doing the job and I feel have earned the job. So why would we all of a sudden look elsewhere? Um, and I think it's important enough that for continuity, I would wanna see it through and run the right way rather than trying to get someone's product to speed. I'd be more concerned about that.
I echo what Kelly just said. I, I think it would be foolish to look for a superintendent now at this point in this process. We've been doing this for how many years now? And you'd have to update all that information to a new superintendent. And they'd have to learn all the, all these people that we've been working with in this consolidation, collaboration. They'd have to get to know them. They're just, I, I think it would be ten steps backwards if we were to post. I, I'm not in support of posting for a superintendent either. You've got, I agree with Kelly, I mean.
Not, not to mention.
I think it's foolish.
Not, not, not to mention, and just to add on to that is, what would we post for? We might have a, a job as a superintendent in a consolidated district. If we're able to have an election on May twelfth and, and the refer, and it passes in both districts, then we are posting for a consolidated, for a superintendent of a consolidated district? Otherwise, we're posting for a, a shared superintendent in, in two districts? And there's just so many unknowns and, and I.
And that's how it's written, that's how this contract's written. Did, was there even?
Yeah, right, but I mean, that going to the desirability of the position for someone who's outside, I don't think it would be very desirable. And I agree with Brandy, I don't think it'd be wise to go that route.
Well, you don't know, but I, I say that to actually have made this point. Was there even a counterproposal made on these salaries? I don't even, you didn't even negotiate with these salaries. Negotiate it down and see if he's still interested or not. Is he, would he be interested if it wasn't so much?
We, that's what we did in the last meeting.
The one ninety-eight?
The, the last meeting, we had the word session. The board, like I explained a few times here, the board asked us to go to, to that ad hoc committee meeting and negotiating with Noel and say that, you know, people wanted to see where he would move on the, on the, um, you know, front-end loading of, of the finances or look at a different amount. And that's what we did at the last ad hoc meeting.
What was your, what was your counterproposal? Or did you just ask him what he would accept or not?
Well, Matt, Matt provided this, which you have at the table. Um, and sorry, you have my note down there as well because, yeah, I had to send it out to everybody and I made a photocopy of it. Um, but that is what Matt had talked about. We had talked about less money. Um, and Noel felt he was, he was worth it, especially adding on another, another district and, and taking on a lot of, I mean, we've got lots of things coming up, consolidation vote. There is plenty of things coming up that would be stressful for a new superintendent coming in. And, go ahead, Matt.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, and I just, oh, I just wanted to point out also, which was pointed out, brought to our attention several times, and I wasn't around, I don't know if you were on the board, Brandy, when Spencer Anney was, it was decided to share business manager between the districts. And at that time, um, they, what we were told is he was, his salary was increased by twenty thousand dollars for taking on Ewle in addition to his role as a business manager in Virginia.
Correct. Jeff?
I don't know how Virginia structured that. I know that we paid twenty thousand dollars for services. Whether or not they give it to him.
I've got his contract at home and I'd be, I don't, I don't.
So if Jeff is saying our district pays twenty thousand dollars for, for, um, having Spencer be our shared business manager, Noel was asking for the thirty thousand. And I do believe in his old contract, the retention bonus was in the old contract. So.
And so, you know, new contracts are new contracts. You took the ninety days off.
And that's, and that's what he'd be, he'd be willing to do to show the boards that he is, he is wanting to stay.
So you did counter with a hundred eighty-three thousand, that's, fifteen thousand less. I'll figure out the percentage later. But then you made up for it in, in the retention bonus. Instead of thirty, it, it would be sixty after three years. So, so he just said no to all that? You said, okay, well, I guess we'll just give you what you want? Basically, that's what it is.
I.
A counter is a counter. And then he's.
Yeah, I know, we made a mistake by not putting you on that committee, Polly. I mean, that was a mis- Yeah, I know, we made a mistake by not putting you on that committee, Polly, I mean, that was a mistake.
Well, think about, think about-
It was a mistake.
We, we negotiate with everybody else differently, you know?
I want to go back to what Polly said about they had one superintendent to, for all these buildings. About they built up in Northwoods and Southwoods, and if I remember right, those buildings were built terribly. They were, I, I mean, I feel it was the superintendent that probably didn't, couldn't be there, both, both places at the same time, while these buildings are being built. And I feel that we're gonna have a superintendent, a construction liaison, liaison that's gonna take care of that and make sure that our buildings are built to the highest standards. Those buildings that are up in top, up, up in there, I mean, you guys were the first ones to say that they're, and I agree, and I, and I heard it from a lot of tower people up in that area that says that those buildings are built on a budget. Okay?
Well, we're building on a budget too, well, and, okay.
Yeah, but there was a lot of money to be made by a lot of people, as you said, you-
Cross Anderson's the contract manager, they're not responsible for nothing.
But I just wanna, I just wanna, I don't want to talk about the, they were just told what to do, okay? They weren't the construction manager, okay? Johnson Controls was, Johnson Controls was in charge of that whole deal, okay?
But in our position, they will be the construction manager.
That's correct.
In our case.
They're not responsible for nothing. Because when you're starting that building due to faulty construction, six months later-
Let's stay focused on the superintendent contract and the construction liaison. We haven't even talked about the construction liaison position in our discussions with Jeff, and we need to, it's 25 after 5. And we have another meeting starting at 6. So, as I said earlier, the construction liaison slash building maintenance, buildings rounds and maintenance position, Jeff was not initially in favor of doing the buildings and grounds. After having met with him, he's, he said that he'd be willing to do it temporarily, doesn't want to do it on a full-time basis. He realized that, he realizes that the beginning, and correct me if I'm wrong on anything I say, but he realizes that in the beginning, there's not a lot of work for a construction liaison. You know, starting July 1st, they're gonna be in the ground doing stuff for three to four months. And so that construction liaison position wouldn't, wouldn't be busy. But as time goes on, things are definitely gonna get busier. We discussed what other, what other positions he would, are, you know, soft fitting with that construction liaison position. There was a discussion about him being hired as a principal and on assignment for the construction liaison position. But that means we would have to post and hire him for a principal and put him on the union. He'd be on the seniority list and in the union. It, that didn't, the board didn't seem to want to go that direction, so I asked Jeff what other roles he could see himself doing, and that's when he gave that list of things that need to be done going forward to help with the consolidation or, or just the collaboration. And he was going to, he was tasked with going through that list and looking at what potentially he could do from that large list.
Do we have a, y'all description or whatever, qualifications of the construction liaison?
I talked to John Hewnick about the construction liaison, because I too was concerned about, about qualifications for the construction liaison. And what I was told was, the construction liaison does not have to be very knowledgeable, though Jeff has some knowledge in that area. They, they don't have to be extremely knowledgeable in construction, because that's what we have K.A. for. And construction liaisons in other building projects, you know, they have been principals before or other people working in the school, and they don't have a construction liaison background. Jeff does have some construction liaison, or construction, I should say, background, so it's, it's said that you don't need, you don't need that, you don't need to have construction liaison.
I also asked the, the same, I mean, first time this subject was brought to me was by John Hewnick at the MSBA conference. And, you know, and he, he suggested that, you know, would we, you know, consider Jeff as a construction liaison? And, and I had that concern, and I voiced that to him, and, and he told me, and he subsequently told me in subsequent conversations, that, it's not, I, I've referred to this in the past as an owner's rep, where the owner's rep oversees the general contractor. In that case, I think it's more important to have someone who has a, more of a construction background. But in this case, where a construction liaison is the go-between, between the construction manager who is already working for us and, and the actual client. And John has told me that he's seen it in a, a whole, typically, in, in all of his projects, and he's worked on a lot of them. It, it is not a construction professional per se that fills this role. He said more commonly, it is a, a principal on assignment. Or a superintendent doing it part-time in some districts. Or a building and grounds person, he said he's seen them actually assign a teacher to that assignment for, for a year or, or two years. So he says it comes from a wide variety of places, and, and I also had a chance to talk to some of Kraus's other employees. And they basically echoed what John had told me, so I'm, I'm personally comfortable that, that Jeff could be a good fit for that.
And just to, sorry, just one, one other thing, Tom, maybe I'll answer your question before you ask it, but there had been discussion, and I, we have discussed this around the table before, but just in case you weren't here. We have discussed that the construction liaison, remember how I said there was $200,000 put aside, but it was talked about for a part-time position? There was discussion on whether or not this posi, the construction liaison position would be part-time or full-time. And when the discussion was part-time, that's when the buildings and grounds position, because Virginia's got an opening for buildings and grounds coming up, most likely. That's where that piece came in. When Jeff said that he wasn't interested in that, we looked at, well, what, you know, what other, what other things could you potentially do, because the principal option was not on the table?
Well, wait, let's stop there, because where was that discussion held, and when did the board vote on that?
About the, about the principal?
Yeah, about the principal.
We've, we've discussed it at work sessions and-
Well, when was it decided, maybe he should, maybe we should put him in as a principal? Because we're gonna have five principals in the future and five assistant principals, and we're gonna have a principal for the, for that new elementary here. Why not put him in there right now as a full-time principal?
I personally don't support an assistant principal in every building.
Not assistant, well, I know, but there's-
But you mentioned the assistant principal, and I, I don't support-
There's opening right now in the Franklin, or whatever is gonna be the new Franklin. And somebody's gonna fill it, he's got a license. He's got a special ed license, a master's, he could be putting special ed full-time.
We talked about that too.
Well, I never, I never heard that discussion.
That's because that discussion was at the ad hoc meeting.
Oh, okay, we need to have those discussions here.
His special ed licensure, we discussed that.
And, and, and as far as being a principal and waiting and, and included in the bargaining unit, I think there, the consensus of the four of us was that, that we'd prefer to look at going a different route, and, and then in discussions with Margaret, she certainly reinforced that.
Well, okay, again.
By saying that, that-
There's two of you from our board, and then there's seven of us, we need to have-
Right, we're here to make a recommendation to you.
Exactly, okay, but I know, but it, it always seems like, well, we figured it out, it's the best way.
We've been giving the information, Polly, I mean, you've been getting everything, all the superintendent's contracts, you've been getting all the financial things, we've been having discussions. Whether or not you're at the meeting, that's not in my control, that's in your control.
You did not.
But, I want to finish what I was saying about the, about the position being half-time or full-time. Then K.A. said that the position could potentially be full-time if you added in furniture fixtures and equipment, technology. And it would be full-time, but there was some debate in the ad hoc committee about whether or not, one person was told that they've never done that before, another person believed that it had been done before, where the construction liaison did the furniture fixtures and equipment. So we discussed if you took away that furniture fixtures and equipment slash technology, if you were to take that away, and that position again was a part-time position for construction liaison, what are the options? And that's what we discussed with Jeff. Jeff was tasked with going back and looking through the list of things he said needs to be done yet, which was a huge exhaustive list, and we're supposed to be getting that here in the near future. But he's supposed to be looking at that list and seeing what he could potentially do.
Do you have something to say, Tom?
Okay, I think I brought this up before, but I'm going back to, we will be the general contractor. The school district, that is 186 million dollar, 176 million dollar project. Your general contractor is the con, is responsible. If things go wrong, windows fall out due to faulty construction, the general contractor is liable. Now, we're dealing with taxpayers' money. We as a board, it's up to us to ensure that we make decisions that is in the best interest of our taxpayers, because they are the one that's gonna put the bill in the end. If this happens, like it happens up in North, down south, the taxpayers are gonna pick up the bill.
So Tom, are you saying, you're saying that gen, you're thinking the general contractor will be us, the school?
That's right.
But Matt, you, you said you thought the general contractor was Cross Anderson.
Cross Anderson's not the general contractor, they're a construction manager.
So we have no general contractor responsible, right?
We're building, the, the method of construction is different than, than your traditional design bid build.
Okay, so who's going to be-
So there is no general contractor.
Who's going to be responsible if there are problems, like, like St. Louis County, and who's, who's gonna be responsible then, the general?
Cross Anderson.
Isn't usually the general contractor?
I don't have a general contractor on this project, though.
Should we though? Well, should we?
That decision was made before either of us were on the board.
Construction manager, and that's-
It's a different model, it, it's, less and less construction, particularly, I think in the public and private sector, is being done with the traditional design bid build, because it's been shown, I think it's been proven that more often than it, it's, it's better to go this route than to go the other route.
Is that the model that St. Louis County schools had, and now they're having trouble? Well, no, okay, so what do they have?
They hired Johnson Controls to be the, was the technical term there, or a project manager, and then they had a general contractor, I mean, because Johnson Controls did not, they don't do construction. They were basically consulting.
So they didn't see, they didn't oversee any of the work that they were doing, basically?
No.
So they just collected a check and then, with no transparency?
Quite like that, but, I mean, they, they let some, they had some engineers and stuff like that. But as far as the construction goes, they hired Cross Anderson to manage the construction program.
Program manager or general contractor, or is it the same model as we have?
It is not the same model as we have.
Okay, so shouldn't we have somebody overseeing like that? Because they, I, I believe there's a legal thing going on with them about who's really responsible, because some, some things are wrong up there. So I don't know if that's what you're talking about, our-
Yeah, my, my, my understanding is Kraus was a contractor on the county jobs, hired by Johnson Controls.
That's correct.
Okay, so where do we have somebody like that in the middle, looking out for our interests? Not Cross Anderson, that's the-
That's what, that's what we hired Cross Anderson for.
But they're, they're the builders, what if they build something-
They're not the builder, they aren't building anything.
Well, they're, they're gonna subcontract, okay, I know that.
They hired a subcontractor.
No, they're not subcontracting either.
It still comes out that the school district is gonna be responsible with this building of the parks.
They're, they're a construction manager, they're not actually constructing anything. This whole project will get bid out in various packages, and, and they will manage all of those entities that get the bid.
They will manage a general contractor or something like that?
No, we don't have a general contractor, they, uh, let me give you one example. So say they bid out, they're gonna bid out site work pretty soon. So there's various aspects to site work, there's fill, there's blasting, there's site prep, there's the foundation work, and those four things that I just mentioned will probably be bid separately by four sep, separate companies, it could possibly be, the dirt and the site work are the same. Cross Anderson, once the board approves the bid on those areas, Cross Anderson will manage those entities to make sure they are doing what the architects drew.
What if something goes wrong? So let's just take a for instance, and something goes wrong, and the, the foundation wasn't done right, and part of the school starts sinking in the future. Or there's a, there's, you know what's up there? The old Elwood dump is up there, who knows how something might shift up there? I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but, okay, if something happened, and they say, well, it's not our fault, it's not our fault, it's not our fault, who's gonna be responsible?
It's Cross Anderson. See, in, in the St. Louis County model, you know, they had Johnson Controls as the project manager. Cross Anderson was, I don't remember what exactly the term was, and then they had, they had, what's the place I had it?
Max Gray.
Max Gray was heavily involved, because I mean, you have a bunch of different contractors that were involved, and they're all pointing their finger at each other.
Well, I know, and that's where it is now, it's a legal thing, because nobody says they're responsible. So I don't, I, I'm just trying to warn off those types of things, I think you are too.
That's right.
That's the reason that the board decided to go with this model, was to do that.
And with Cross Anderson specifically, and I wasn't here when that decision was made again, but Cross Anderson, I, I understand, and I can't, they, they build more schools in this state than anyone else by far.
In the world.
So?
Or actually in the United States.
Well, so, but back to that, if we're gonna have a liaison-
It's not like we're dealing with a fly-by-night organization that-
If we're gonna have a liaison like that, then, and it's no, it's no slam to you, Jeff, at all, but I think some, you need somebody who, who'd know if something was being put together wrong, or something was not right, and-
That's not the purpose of this, that's what we, that's what we hired Cross Anderson for.
Okay, well.
And that's what Cross Anderson had, why Cross Anderson had told me that you don't need a construction background, background.
Because they're gonna do it.
And that's, I, that I believe is a big reason that the construction management model is used, because when you do a design bid build and hire a general contractor, the general contractor's motive is to save money. And it's not this way. The general contractor, they have bid, okay, to deliver this product for X dollars. As their profit margin increases with as little of the money as they can put in it. That's not the case here.
But the point of mine is, who is responsible?
Cross Anderson.
Cross Anderson.
Well, well, do you get that in writing? If this, if this comes of, if we have problems, one or two years down the road due to faulty construction, they're gonna pick up the bill, I'd like to see that in writing.
I have asked, and, and, I have asked both John Hewnick and, and others at Kraus, you know, indicated that it would be good at a joint session if they could come and kind of give a presentation and cover these kinds of things, as far as this is what their job is, and to make it. I, I know just enough about this stuff to, to get me in trouble, to be honest with you.
I'm looking down the road for a taxpayer that-
Oh, absolutely, for just that, Tom, to say-
That's right.
This is.
Like I say, I, I'm not a building expert either. I mean, I'm not a mechanical engineer. A mechanical engineer knows buildings. That's his job.
Well, there's, Tom, there's many, Tom, there's many, 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 many engineers that go into a design of a building, not just a mechanical, there's structural, there's, there's soils and grounds, there's electrical, there's energy management engineers. I mean, there's a lot.
Well, if you want, that's why we have, if we have to make sure that it's done right.
Well, I believe Johnson Control, or Johnson Controls, excuse me, Kraus Anderson is going to make sure we get the best.
Okay, well.
I hope so.
Yeah, we'll get that in writing there.
And I do believe that it's, it's good, there's gonna be a project labor agreement. There was sign that they all, will hire all union.
Yeah.
All local as much as they can.
You guys are ready for that?
Right, so just so you know, Tom.
Yeah, that's no problem. I have no problem. I, I, thing is that if we run into problems two or three years down the road due to faulty construction, who is gonna be liable? Who's gonna pick up the bill? That's what I like to see. Kraus Anderson put that in writing, that they as a contract manager will be responsible. I'd have that in writing.
Right, and I think that is in, in the, the, the contract and, eh, you know, do disputes come up in construction? All the time.
I, I don't like to go on here. See, I like them black and white. Be a perfect, looking at these other schools, yeah, you have problems down the line. I don't wanna hang an eye on the taxpayers.
It's just like anything else. You have somebody representing your best interest and it's like a dual agency. You know how that goes to Jeff sometimes, dual agencies, when you represent both the buyer and the seller. Well, yeah, it works sometimes, but then there's no real, um, I'm a loyalty a hundred percent. I want somebody looking out for our best interest. Kraus Anderson is, is the doing, doing the project. They're, they're, they're the servicer, they're the make, doing the product. And I guess I feel just like you, that making somebody other than them.
But one of the, I mean, one of the things you gotta remember too, I mean, they, the board set Kraus Anderson salaries. I mean, they have no vested interest in, I mean, there's no more money for them to make past what you guys already approved.
Well, that's not the point. It's about making the money.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, and then that's, you know, a lot of, I mean, a lot of times the, the money's made on construction projects with change orders. And Kraus is, they aren't making any money if there's change orders. Cause there will be change orders. I mean, but that does make a difference.
Any subcontractors, they work on what? Eight percent roughly?
Yeah.
Kraus Anderson would be working on what? One percent?
They're eight percent or more, I think. I remember.
Kraus is two percent, we give him. Six and a half to the architect.
Six and a half and two. I see it as eight together.
But they're two separate entities.
Okay, okay.
So again, with the construction liaison position, we are in discussions and negotiations with Jeff about that. So we can make a, hopefully make a recommendation in the near future for both positions. And there is the resolution that is on the agenda for this evening as well. And if, um, you know, regarding our current superintendent's, um, contract. So if there's any questions and Margaret is here, would be a good opportunity to ask about that as well.
So I gotta ask.
Because it does say discuss possible contractor, Jeff Carey for both districts or new consolidated school district. She's gonna attend for part of the meeting, right, Margaret? If we need her to for questions on.
Is she there?
Yeah, she's there, but.
Um, I, I have a question, a comparison too, about how, how this one changed the, um, oh, construction, construction liaison and the first one we got. And it changed just like the superintendent's ones changed, that at first it was only if there were a consolidation. Otherwise it went away and now both of them have changed to say.
But Polly, we haven't approved anything. We're not, we haven't even made a recommendation yet.
That's why we're discussing it. Okay, we're discussing this now. And I saw that's one way that it changed. And it's, uh, equal to how the superintendent's contract changed. That it will be whether we consolidate or not, you're gonna have a superintendent, whereas before it was just other consolidation. And the same with this. So there's, there's a big difference there too. We don't consolidate.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I disagree with especially the superintendent one there. We don't consolidate. I think we should have remained two, uh, separate superintendents until we do consolidate. That way the best interest of both districts and students and taxpayers can be best guaranteed, I think.
Well, if, if we have a joint superintendent, they're working for both districts, so they're.
But we're still being independent till we're consolidated. There's still, are, would be things.
Yes, ab- absolutely.
One district, cause we've already had on that one district feels differently than the other and you've got leadership and you, you've got a lot of influence at, at, at superintendent level and to a board level, to everything. And I would like to be more confident that we have a representative of our own, should we not consolidate the first year? Until we do consolidate. Then it makes perfect sense.
But we as a board also have a responsibility to, to look out for our employees and we are able to do that as well. Is there anything else that we need to discuss?
You also said though, if that was a combined job and the, the budget money there, now it sounds like it's, plan is not to combine the liaison and the maintenance person. But if, if it were, money would have to come out of somewhere else that wasn't that much in the budget. So that's another thing under budget.
It would, it does need to be, I mean, and, and it, it's hard to do it until we figure out what that
Be more of a.
contract would look like, but there, we do need to, um, determine how that salary is, is split. How much of it may come out of the budget? Um, the, the construction budget, because there is money, I understand, in the construction budget for that. And we need to, um, also determine what share, I mean, if there's consolidation, then you don't have to split it any further. But if there is no consolidation, then we have to determine how that salary is split three ways rather than two, if you will. If there's consolidation, you have money coming out of the regular operating budget of the consolidated district and out of the construction mon- budget. If we don't have consolidation, you have money coming out of the two independent districts and then a portion coming out of the construction budget also. And we do need to lay that out and that's, I think, a very good point. Regarding both the potential liaison position and the superintendent position.
And then there's still the buildings and grounds open, whether Virginia fills that before any consolidation or anything else. And or they've got a principal opening, whether they'll fill it or not. I think they're advertising for it or they're advertising for something. And so, there you go. There's positions available.
Anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
Should we take a brief break then?
I'll just leave you guys in this meeting and I'll, I'm just gonna rearrange a little bit and put it in front of Bill.
Sound good?